Good evening, everyone. I'm welcome Harrisburg City Council Legislative Session, Tuesday, September 11, 2018. I'm calling this meeting to order at 6:00 PM. Mr. Petrowski, please do the roll call.
Mr. Allott.
Present.
Ms. Daniels.
Here.
Ms. Green.
Present.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Madsen.
Here.
Mr. Majors.
Here.
Ms. Williams.
Here. Thank you, Mr. Petrowski. Moving on to the invocation, Mr. Madsen.
Yes, this is the 17th anniversary of the 9/11 attacks. So I just want to do a moment of silence for those that were lost that day and then for the firefighters that had gained poison essentially from the gases that died later from those. So just a moment for them, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Madsen. Moving on to the Pledge of Allegiance, Ms. Green.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Moving on to communications, we have a report tonight from Dan Miller, who was our city treasurer. Mr. Miller, welcome. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, President Williams. Thank you, council, for taking the time to listen to me. Ms. Williams and I had a meeting concerning the accounts receivable for trash and the billing of that and the annual billing, which I know we discussed a little bit earlier in the year. I don't think it got its full fleshing out with council as it was involved with another bill. And so, and I know some council members requested additional information on this whole procedure. So I wanted to bring it back to the attention and after our meeting, Ms. Williams just thought that I should come and discuss this with everyone in council. And I just want to say, to begin with, I'll be glad to discuss it with anyone, anytime, because I think it's a very important issue for the city and hopefully one we can act on. I really don't want to take over you with numbers, so I tried to keep it very simple. And I have three or four pages I'd like you to look at. And the first one really says, I think, really a big part of the story. And that is that as of, we do our billing around the 24th or 26th of the month, and as of April, or August 24th, the receivables, the amount of trash fees owed to the city totaled $12.2 million. It's a really large number. And it's about, basically, it's 50% commercial, it's 50% residential, if you break it in. And as far as the residential goes, I do want you to know that that includes apartment buildings of four units or less. So it's not necessarily homeowners. It is landlords would be included in that residential number. And if you want to turn to the second page, I think what's, the other really important thing to note about this is that just since December, the increase in our trash receivables is $1.8 million. And, you know, I hope we can collect that money, but it's, you know, it's very difficult to go back and get some of this money, especially in the situation that Harrisburg is in right now. As you know, I'm the treasurer. Treasurer's job is to collect the funds, the taxes, everything that comes to the city should come to the treasurer. The problem with this, and I know I think Ms. Williams is the only one who was on council back when all of this maybe happened, I don't know for sure, but prior to the Strong Plan, the city had an operations revenue department. And that department was really our collection arm. When people didn't pay, that's who collected. And at that time, we had, we collected for sewer, water, and trash. And we billed sewer, water, and trash every month in a monthly manner. And the leverage that the city had in order to get people to pay was that we could turn off their water. Now, nobody wants their water turned off. I don't want to turn people's water off. But if people did not pay, the city ultimately turned their water off, that got their attention. People wanted their water turned back on, they came down and paid. So we were able to collect these funds. Since the Strong Plan and the water and sewer moved over to Capital Region Water, so did the operations revenue department. So basically, since that time, no one in the city has been actively trying to collect these fees. Now, we're not trying to collect water, and we're not billing for water, we're not billing for sewer. We are still billing for trash. And basically, what we're doing is billing, if you don't pay, you get a bill the next month with additional charge. And as a matter of fact, I think for the first four or five years, we weren't even adding any kind of penalty to that. So, you know, I don't know exactly what happened, but I think people discovered that if they didn't pay, their trash still was collected, but nothing else happened. Maybe their bill was going up, but nobody was really doing anything about it. And so for, for these five years, you know, our receivable balance has just increased roughly by $2 million a year. And that's money that really we're leaving on the table and we don't have, we as in Treasury, don't have the power to collect. And so my proposal for this, or our proposal, it's also, it's a deputy here, it's a great idea, it's her idea, is that we go to an annual billing. And the importance of this is that we would bill for one full year, we would add it right to the real estate tax bill notice, and then people can have a chance to pay, and several options. You know, 80% of our folks pay either in the discount period or in the flat period, mostly in the discount period. So I think most people would just pay this annually, it would be no problem. For people that would have a more difficult time paying, we already have a payment plan on real estate taxes where you can pay four payments within the year. And we have proposed, as you know, we are going to have a program to pay this with, for 12 monthly payments, if we can go to the annual billing. So I think we have the basis covered to help people. So in some sense, most people, I think, would pay right up front, but other people would be able to pay on a monthly or quarterly basis, roughly quarterly. The reason that this is so important is because of what happens now, the way we collect our real estate taxes, which we collect about 98% of our real estate taxes. We do a good job of that. But it's not really us doing it. At the end of the year, any unpaid real estate taxes are transferred over to the county. And as you know, the county has its own method of collection, which ultimately could be selling of the property. And of course, we don't want that to happen. We just want people to pay their taxes. And what happens is, again, this gets people's attention. They know that their house could be sold, and, you know, so often, right before that that happens, they pay and we collect. So there is an excellent chance for us to collect, you know, however much we're, you know, we're missing each year. This year, like if you look at the third page, I've estimated, right now, we, you know, as I said, we haven't collected $1.8 million. If you just do simple extrapolation, that goes to almost $2.8 million this year that we leave on the table as uncollected. You know, as you can see, that's 10, almost, that's $10,000 a day. I mean, that's a lot of money. And, you know, I can't, don't have to tell you, we're in a fiscal crisis, we can use this money. How much money will we collect? I don't know. But it's going to be a significant amount of money when this is all said and done. And we can only do it, really, if we can put this on the real estate tax bill. We can send it to the county, and the counties can really have the leverage to get people to pay. So, you know, I don't know if you have any questions. I, you know, it's so important for us. I mean, I didn't mention that in addition to this, it's a very smart and efficient way for our department to operate. We will save $100,000 in direct costs. We will not be sending out 200,000 invoices a year. We will not be having 200,000 payments coming in. So I didn't even calculate how that savings will impact us, but it'll be a very efficient way for us to operate. And I can see, so, and with that, we have additional plans to operate even more efficiently with other programs, but we need to get this accomplished first. And, you know, the thing is, we just want council to give us the tools to do our job in an effective and efficient manner. And I do want to address one other thing, because I know, you know, from my perspective, I think there's very little drawback to this. Now, I know some folks complained because this would be added to their real estate taxes. And so they could have additional possibility of losing a home. And I think the reality of that is that this is less than $400 a year. It is not an increase in trash fees. This is what they should be paying anyway. There's no increase. And as a matter of fact, you can get a discount if you pay it upfront. So there's a little bit of that. If, in fact, council finds that there is some type of a problem where people can't pay this, you know, council could come up with a system for low-income folks or people who qualify to have reduced trash fees or to negate the trash fee if, in that case. We do already have a program like that for real estate taxes. That's not used a lot, but we do have that. So if you, if that is the concern, that folks could lose their house, you know, there's a way to address that. I mean, this makes sense in so many ways. It increases our revenue, which we desperately need. It's much more efficient for the firm, for the, for the way we operate. And I think we can address any problems that council sees. And, you know, and one other thing I want to mention is that tenants will no longer be billed. The only persons, people that will be billed will be property owners. So the whole liability really goes to property owners, not to tenants. So I think this is one positive thing for many tenants in the city of Harrisburg.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Miller. I'll start to my right. Ms. Daniels, do you have any questions?
Yeah, you keep saying that we don't have any enforcement mechanism, but we've had our collections solicitor, we'll be pointing on you one today. Are they just not doing their jobs?
Yeah, I don't want to be the one to break the news to you, but we, I don't think any liens have been filed, you know, that I'm aware of. The other thing is, when you file a lien, it's much more expensive, much more time-consuming, and there's no guarantee to get that money. You're only going to get that money when the house is sold.
Right.
So, so we can do that?
Which is the same that's going to happen in a foreclosure.
Well, it's much cheaper. The county charges us 5%. And not all of these are going to go to foreclosure. What does happen is people realize, oh, I have to pay my real estate taxes.
I'm sorry, I've just seen too many homes that have been sold for like $70 because of trash bills. That's actually the new increasing pattern because of privatized garbage collection. So you're seeing a lot of debts being attached to homes. And so you're seeing like a, it's not a big one, but before you never saw people losing their homes for garbage, it was just always taxes or mortgage.
You're seeing that in Dolphin County?
Throughout the state, throughout the state.
Maybe you could, you know, share some of that information.
Sure.
Is it all Ms. Daniels?
That's, well, the, I mean, you know, I think the residential and commercials are treated, they're like different leverages because the impact on them are, of them is different, like the top 10 commercials are 3 million compared to, right, how many?
I'm sorry, didn't, they're treated differently?
No, I mean, they, they have a different impact on our budget, right? Because you have, with 10, 10 owners, on the commercial side, you have 3 million, right? Whereas with the residential, you have, what's going on?
We have like 13,600 on the residential.
Right.
They're smaller. And that's the other thing, you put a lien on for, you know, $2,000 or less, you know, it's, you know, it's difficult to do. It's a lot of work, and it's very efficient to do it through the county, who only charges us 5%. And I think the other thing is, if you think about all of our revenue that comes in here, if you think about our earned income tax, if you think about the local services tax, you think about our real estate taxes, you know, there's a pretty heavy hand in getting those, that revenue. For most people, we're taking it before they even get it in their paycheck, and it's coming to us. You know, and in real estate taxes, obviously, we can sell a home. So why is this any different? And, you know, and 70% of our, or more, are pretty current. So it's not, you know, it's not that. But why should those 70% be carrying the load while the other 30% really are getting away with, with not paying?
Well, the thing is, we don't know why, what's going on with the other 30%, right? So the city of Harrisburg itself is a high-poverty city. I mean, our whole city is, is a high-poverty.
And most of those are tenants.
Right.
And they're no longer going to get a bill. So it'll be really great for, I think, for those people. And I encourage council, if you do-
We also have a lot of seniors, I mean, we have a lot of people-
Exactly. And if you have an issue with that, let's come up with a plan that says, okay, if you're a senior and you're in low income, we can reduce your trash bill.
I think what I'm saying, you know, I like the idea of collecting, but I think we're going with a hammer when we may be able to have other tools. And it sounds like we're already not using some of the tools we have. Because honestly, like filing for a lien for someone who owes us, you know, 1/10 of $3 million in garbage, that sounds pretty reasonable to me. That sounds like a pretty reasonable, reasonable use of resources, right? Compared to having someone file a lien for $200, right? So yeah, it may be too expensive to file for $200, but whoever those 10 people are that owe us $3 million, it would totally be worth it, right?
I'm all in favor of going after those and you can discuss that with-
So why are we not using the tools that we have?
That's not in our area. That's, you know, you'll have to discuss that with the law office. That's who's working on those.
So we'll keep giving tools and nobody keeps, and people keep not using them, which is what happens with the city all the time.
That actually, not our department. We're asking for a tool that we will use and we can use.
Yeah, but the tool you're asking for is a hammer.
It's not really a hammer. It's, you know, you could just, you know, what, there's no other option for us, really. There's no real viable option. And, you know, as I was told, they're not going to put liens on. We have, let's say, 4,000 of the delinquent accounts of, you know, varying amounts. That's, you know, they're not going to put liens on 4,000 of those accounts.
Have you asked the, our city solicitor's office for alternative options and alternative tools that are not as, as harsh?
As drastic as this. Well, no one has given me any suggestion of any other, you know, less harsh way to do this, honestly. And as, and actually, you know, I have the support of, of the administration, and the administration said, you know, the reality is, those liens are not going to be put on. I mean, the law office, I think, has, has a lot of work to do as it is, and it hasn't happened. I'm not trying to get into that, and it's not my area. But, but this would alleviate it completely from the law office and be very seamless and very easy and very inexpensive to do all these collections.
Yeah, you're focusing on the inexpensive. What I'm focused is on is another house going empty because you have some person who has unstable income or very limited income, and we give another opportunity for that house or that building to go vacant. And you walk around the city and some, some blocks are just like one building away from whatever. And then you have to think about the impact of the neighbor who has to live next to a house that's filled with mold and doesn't have the ability to go in there. So, you know, so on the one hand, like, I appreciate going after people who are, you know, willfully not paying these debts. On the other hand, the reality is that people who, we're going to end up going after are the ones who really don't have their resources. Because, look, if there's, if somebody owes us $3 million in garbage, it's because it means they can put up a fight when we go after them, and that's why we're not collecting. And we're too lazy to go after them. That's the reality.
Well, I'm all for that. I mean, that's, then I'm not against that at all. And actually, I think that you're completely right. We don't want vacant houses. We want, we don't want people to sell their houses. So if there are people that actually cannot afford it and there's a program for that, let's work together and develop that. 80% of the people are going to pay, you know, even within the first five months. So if you believe that there are people, and there are, that can't do this, let's come up with a program that if they qualify, we won't, you know, we can waive the trash fees or we can reduce it. I have no problem with that. But I can't come up with that. I think council has to determine what those parameters are. And I'll, and I'll be glad to work with you. I mean, our, our office would certainly, you know, carry your will out. But, but we don't want to, you know, miss this big opportunity because we're not addressing that, that issue. And I think it's a completely valid issue and be glad to work with you on.
Okay. That's the extent of my comments.
Thank you. Mr. Majors?
Well, thank you, Mr. Miller. So as Councilwoman Daniels pointed out, so just looking at this overall, the first page you provided us, which is total 12 million, 12.4 million of trash accounts receivable, commercial accounts for 50%, residential accounts for 50% of said commercial account. So a quarter of that is amongst 10 commercial accounts.
Correct.
I don't understand why we're not, why can't, we have to have the power to file liens or go after those 10 accounts. That would roughly take up at least, that would, those 10 folks account for one quarter of the trash due to the city, why, trash accounts receivable due to the city. I mean, if anything, we've, I'm sure we identified who those folks are, and us being able to either negotiate or find a way to come to some resolution on those would, that knocks out, you know, that knocks out a quarter of our trash accounts receivable right there. I mean, I don't, I don't know, I don't know what the negotiations look like. I don't want to speak for the law bureau, but I know that's one, that takes out 3 million, 3.1 million there, right?
I hope. And actually, that is not in our purview. And Neil, I don't want to put you on the spot, but if you want to address any of that, you can. But, but, you know, I'd love to get that, collect that. But it's, it's, I think that'll work if we do this, in future years, those, at the end of the year, if they haven't paid, they're going to go over to the county and those procedures will go forward.
Okay. So I don't, and I'm not asking for Neil on the spot right now, this is a conversation we're having.
In the last 12 months, we've filed about $900,000 in liens for sanitation in Dolphin County. We're in negotiation with the largest single owner, which is actually, of the 10, I believe there are four or five of the properties are the same collective of people. And they've purposely taken a position not to pay in this negotiation, and we are deeply in with them along where we're going. And so, you know, we're painfully aware of it, of what it is. But I can't really talk about either the negotiation or the litigation in public.
Yeah, and I'm not, we're not asking for that to occur in public, so, all right. So we may be able to, oh, go ahead, sorry.
Regardless, that's a longer process that, you know, that's something that we're working on. It's not saying they'd be counted on coming in tomorrow.
Right.
I think what the treasurer is talking about, especially on the residential side, which is over 6 million, is, you know, lots and lots of smaller accounts. And in many cases, you know, if our efforts are on the bigger accounts, then it's going to be hard to, it's going to be hard to find another means of collecting on those.
Right. And so I'm getting to that. So the next, on the residential side, you know, with, when all the, when water, sewer, and trash were all together, I guess operations revenue wasn't really a department that was focused on collection. They were more focused on shut-offs, and then that forces you to come in to then have to work on reconciling. So that's not really a collections department. That's a, hey, we have, we have a hammer, which is to shut off your water, which compels you to come in the door and talk to us. So that's not really, I mean, to me, that's, that's another hammer. So, but of the $6 million that we're talking about right now, in residential, one thing that we were looking at was working on some sort of solution to deal with some of the vacant properties. So of that, do we know how many are vacant properties that we may, that may be accruing a bill that we aren't receiving anything from because they may say that, hey, that's vacant, why am I receiving it? Do we have an idea of what that is?
That is a really difficult, I mean, I knew I'd get that question, and we've looked at that. The only information we have on that is basically from five years ago. And what, the way it worked is, if your meter was read, and I, and I don't, somebody could correct me on this, but if it didn't move for a period of time, I think three months, then we would, it would get labeled as vacant, okay? Well, none of that has occurred for five years because we no longer read the water meter. So we have no real idea. The only thing we have is what was vacant five years ago. So based on that, it was about 10%, I'd say. So it may be about 10%. Now, in this case, that, that new law is going to take effect in 2019, and you have to be proactive in order to, for it to become a vacant property. So, you know, how much, how much is this is going to be, I don't know, it could be, you know, whatever, 10%. But it's still a lot of money that's not being collected.
Well, again, that's, you're giving me 10% as a number. I mean, I don't have any facts to back that down.
Well, that's based, okay, what's based on?
That's based on five years ago, but we know that there's been a lot of turnover of properties, properties that were vacant five years ago could be occupied, and we, I mean, you're a resident city as well, so I know you recognize that there are several vacant properties throughout the city. I don't know off the top of my head how many, I don't know if the number stayed the same or equal, but-
It's with the assumption that what was five years ago has no difference than it is now. And as a matter of fact, it may have gone the other, you know, some of the-
Right. It may have gone either way.
Yeah, exactly. So it's a difficult thing.
Plus or minus, right.
I wish I had the answer to that, but, but if we went just with what was happening five years ago and it was the same and nothing has changed, it's about 10%.
Okay. And like I said, so, all this information is helpful. I know we talked about this a few months ago when we looked at the sanitation ordinance. I'm willing to sit down with you and your department and discuss this issue further since, as the chair of public works, and see if this is something we can, as a council, want to continue to explore. Like I said, I'm not opposed to it, I just want to flesh it out a little bit more. Now, we also are providing folks with some other tools to be able to pay their bills. And as those things start to come into fruition and we see how those collections go, I know me personally, even though it cost me an extra buck, I've taken advantage of paying my bill online, which I appreciate now that it's up and running. And hopefully, we'll get more residents starting to use that as a tool to not just, so that it makes paying your bill a little bit more user-friendly. And even having that now, so you have to put your property number in. So I don't know how we'll be able to reconcile some of the issues with vacant properties and getting people to pay their bill, because we do, I know there's been an issue in the past with reconciling all of our, our properties in, in the billing. So I guess I look forward to having a future conversation with you on this matter.
I'm not sure I would agree with that, that there's an issue of reconciling our properties. I mean, we, we, and that's what it feels like, we don't have a good handle on what is due us. I believe, I believe in treasury, we do.
Again, you say you know what's due, but we don't understand how many, I mean, how much of this is vacant?
Well, that's not a reconciling issue, but yeah, that's an issue.
Well, that's, that becomes an issue of-
But we will know that in the future.
Yes, and I hope, yeah, I agree.
By the end of the year.
I agree. So I'm willing to continue to have these conversations with you. And maybe I misspoke, so I know you guys do a good job. I'm not, this isn't, this wasn't me having a negative reflection on the Treasury Department. I don't want you to take it that way.
And I do want to point out, we feel it's urgent that this get passed this year because if, if we pass it this year, that means in January, we can do the billing, which means by the end of 2019, things that are not, accounts that are not paid can be turned over to, to the county. If we don't pass it in 2018, then we aren't going to bill that way in 2019, so we will lose another year, which could be whatever, you know, two or more million dollars of revenue.
And then, to that end, so if we get it passed, but, so you believe we have all the IT structure and everything we need to be able to deal with?
I believe we will do it, and if, if it's a $2 million thing, it's worth it, you know, we can get it all done. And I know, I've been, we've been meeting with Steve Bortner, we were planning that this would happen, so, so plans have been already made and, and, you know, we think we'll be able to handle it.
Okay. All right. Well, I'll look forward to talking with you further. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Majors. Mr. Allott?
So just a quick question on the, the commercial accounts, just such, I know we're not talking about any individuals in particular, but when I'm looking at, I see the balance due in the last payment. So some-
You know what? That actually is a, this is a confidential number.
All right. So I don't, I just have questions about whether it's a delinquent payment or anything like that, but I got asked that offline. Now, for the residential, my question would be specifically to, so it's roughly 6 million in unpaid. Is that all unpaid in accounts that are delinquent and not being paid on at all? Or they are accounts that are probably past due that people are making some payments on as part of a payment process?
That is actually the amount on August 24th.
As of just past due trash?
No, it's any, any, anything that's owed to us.
Okay.
We bill approximately 1.3 million each month. And so I guess maybe you could say half of that is residential. I don't, I don't want to say what that is because I don't know the answer to that. know the answer to that. But in total, it's about 1.3 million. So if you look at the twelve point two, really, the past two amounts, the past due amounts are about 11 million dollars.
Okay.
And, you know, I did do an analysis of, of this. You know, I'd say seventy percent or so are, are either current or one month behind.
Gotcha. So that's, well, that's what I was kind of curious about, of, like, how many people fall into that, where I am, you know, getting to one month, three months, you know, like that thirty, sixty, ninety day in arrears kind of thing?
Yes.
And then how many people just aren't paying it? I guess that's what I was kind of curious about.
Yes. And that is, you know, the, I don't get a report that tells me that exact information. I have a report that is a huge, it has sixteen thousand lines and everything. And so I was able to get some of that information, and, and I can share it with you. I don't really want to do it here because I, I don't know that it's a hundred percent accurate.
Well, I guess one of the things I'd be...
But, but it is about seventy thirty.
When we tackled back in 2014, when we came in right after UNACT 47 went into effect, we, we were looking at reports of, you know, prior administrations not paying, basically not paying bills. So I remember getting a report, we could see things that were a year plus not paid, you know, and then kind of breaking it down. And I'd, I'd be curious in the same respects here, particularly when you're looking at residential, to see a breakdown of just what that looks like thirty, sixty, ninety days out, and then long-term, just not payment at all. Because I guess going back to, you know, looking at the root cause of what's happening, is it, you know, is it because people can't afford it? Is it people that are just refusing to pay? Is it people who are just getting behind because of economic conditions? Like, if we don't have some of that information, I think we're just drawing conclusions based on not having any of the facts. And I think that would help us as we look to figure out how to regulate it.
I do have, I do have what I have. And, and from my, based on my calculations on residential, if you are, owe more than nineteen hundred and forty dollars, almost $2,000, that means that you haven't made a payment in two years, you're two years behind, roughly.
Two years in arrears.
There are, I, from my calculations, I don't want to say this is, this is a hundred percent true, but this is my sorting of the, the data. There were sixteen hundred and twenty-six of the sixteen hundred and twenty-six. And there were then, for people that haven't, that are over five years, two hundred and fifty-one. So you total that, it's, you know, close to nineteen hundred, hundred accounts.
So it looks like if I'm looking breakdown from people who are, based on what you showed me, is roughly half of the accounts listed are over six months beyond, behind payments?
No, no, no. There, much, you know, seventy percent are either current or are only one month past due.
I'm just going to get the past due, yes. So it looks, oh, that's right, current is half.
Yeah. It, it's about, I'm going to say a roughly a third, or thirty percent, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah. Everyone did not get a copy of this sheet.
That is not, was not part of the packet tonight.
Well, this is also, this would have been helpful information as I was asking.
I thought you were going to give them a, a copy of that.
All right. Go ahead, proceed, because that's, that's very helpful.
You know, I, I want to give you really accurate information, and, and this, I believe, is fairly accurate, but it's not a report, you know, it's a huge file, and it's my way of, of getting that information, but it's not, I wish we could, I think we probably can get the accurate information.
Yeah, yeah.
If I request that report.
And that's why I'm trying to go down that path, is I think if we're going to try to legislate this somehow, then I think we have to begin to speak to what, like, what some of the true root causes might be in order to compel the type of behavior that we want to see happen with it. And if we're looking at people who are suffering from economic conditions that prevent them from paying their trash, we need to look at that. But if we're looking at people just doing it through malfeasance or just not, I would look at that, too. So part of us is understanding exactly what, what's happening there.
I think what's happened is we have no teeth. And over the past five years, people that, that would have been contacted and had, you know, taken it more seriously to pay this bill, have found out that they cannot pay it and have no real consequence.
Yeah. That's all I'm afraid of. I mean, I think this, well, obviously, we're going to be going down this path, so we can figure it out.
Okay, Mr. Johnson.
I just, I'm glad the sheet came up. And I, like I said, this is just like your way for you to kind of sort the data. But there's, there's a couple of things, just, just listening to the conversation where I think that we could consider. I know one of the things that was mentioned, I guess, with the annual billing, the removal of it being billed to the tenants. Even now, we don't, I don't understand why, if we know, like, the tenants can sometimes be the issue in creating some of the delinquencies, why are we even billing the tenants to begin with?
Actually, that's, that's a policy that I inherited, and I don't, not that fond of it. And I was very glad, I would have been very glad if this would have been adopted, because then we could have stopped that policy. So...
But I think, no, no, that, I think, through ordinance...
Wait a minute, wait a minute, Mr. Majors.
Yeah. Through ordinance, the ordinance doesn't say anything about billing the tenants. I think we provide it as more of a courtesy rather than a policy.
So it really, though, follows the way all utilities with rental units do it. What they do is they get the landlord's name, and then you have to have a computer system that works. You get the landlord's name, you put them on the account, substitute the tenant on PPL, on UGI, on the cable.
No, I thought you wanted to say...
On those actual utilities, when the tenant notice comes, the tenant left, it comes automatically back into the landlord's name. Way back when, this system did that. Way back when the landlord got a notice that the, that the person had left. And so, I mean, and so that, I think it just reflected what the PUC set up years ago all over the state. And, and they, when they put this, I don't know when, thirty-five years ago into the city, and it just sort of reflects that sort of, what was normalcy then. And, and we were doing water, so it made perfect sense, because a lot of the water companies are regulated by the PUC as well, just not the municipal ones. So that's all it was, I think, was just sort of, that's the Pennsylvania way of dealing with utilities, and it reflected that. Whether it still makes good sense is worth looking at, but I mean, that, but you do need technology either way. I will note that when you start mailing the landlords, a bunch of them are out of town. Enforcement is much more complicated, service is much more complicated. And the tenant's the one who cares if the notice is on the door more than the landlord does. So it's a mixed bag. I'm not saying it's a right way or a wrong way. I think you'll get more people that pay that don't pay, that aren't paying now, and then you'll get some that don't pay because, you know, they're not going to underwrite the tenant's obligations. So you'll, you'll, that'll be a learning curve either way you do it.
However, I do think that is part of the problem. I mean, it, even, if you're the landlord and you want the tenant to pay, the tenant doesn't pay, that, that doesn't go away when that tenant moves. It stays on as a receivable to the city on that property, because it's based on the property. But you can see landlords saying, well, my tenant should have paid that, I'm not paying that. And then they don't pay it, nothing really happens. And I think that's another reason that, that these receivables continue to go up.
But even, but what I'm saying is, that's the part where I agree, but even without the, the annual billing, that's still, we can still change the way we do business in that fashion of saying...
We could. And I was hoping to do that in, in conjunction with this.
Another thing to kind of point out, because I know, like, there, there's definitely some wins when it comes down to annual billing, as far as just like the efficiency. Right now, you know, there's not too many. I, I don't know, I haven't found the place, there probably is a place, but I'm not aware of a lot of places, especially people who do trash in the private sector who bill monthly. At most, you see people either bill quarterly. You have, some people have different programs where people pay once a year. Sometimes they're on like a bag program, like Suspana Township, they offer a bag program with, people come in, they pay maybe like a hundred fifty dollars, they receive a certain amount of bags, and that's what they put out for the year. So there are different ways where, as far as our, our, with the, what, what we have now, as far as our efficiencies, just seems to be overwhelming as far as where we can, really can get a true savings from. I understand annual billing does, annual billing and putting that on the tax bill gives it a hundred percent of taking away from allowing those efficiencies to come. But I think even just what we're doing, I think we're taking a major step, and we're not even searching for efficiencies of what we could possibly do in the system that we're in. Another thing I wanted to point out is just a breakdown of like the number of the six, of the six million. I think, you know, on, as receivables, that's, like, when, when you're saying, you're looking at it from the big pie, six million is owed to us. And then when I saw the small chart from there, I guess, looking over that nineteen, I guess, nineteen hundred and forty dollars for two years, and then over five years, it kind of breaks down to really, we're looking at about twenty percent, about nineteen percent of those accounts are like two years, two years or more as far as being owed to us. I think the part which is interesting to actually explore, is still a receivable to the city, but knowing how much the city changes hands as far as property owners, I'm not even talking about tenants, I'm just talking about actual property owners, where it's following the person, and where that person may owe. I, I own this property at one point in time. I didn't pay it for two years. My house got foreclosed on. Someone else bought it. And we're still seeing as a, as a receivable to the city, but necessarily, that property could have became in good standings, where someone may be living there paying it, but that receivable's still out there for maybe that two or five years when that property was not, was in someone else's name and is still owed to us. So I think it's interesting to kind of really kind of dive that. I, I, I'm not, I'm saying there's definitely, through annual billing, that we'll gain some of those, that money that we're seeing. But I think as far as looking at, of the potential of like that six million that we're collecting, I don't think we're definitely going to get anywhere near that, just because of the changeover in properties and situations that exist like that. You see what I'm saying?
Well, I, I would say that I'm not going to, confident that we'll get the twelve million dollars that owed to the city right here. And that's why I think it's so important that this get passed this year. Because I do think we will collect a large percentage. I think we'll collect ninety-some percent of, of these, of these billings. Now, other than the maybe, okay, maybe ninety percent. I mean, it's going to be a very large number. I don't know what number that is. You know, I will give you that. But whatever is not vacant, I believe we will collect, because that is our history of collecting real estate taxes. But we're not going to collect the money that's already gone, because that's not going to go to the county. We can't do that. It's all about the future. And so that's why it's important to do that.
You see what I'm saying, as far as the actual money, the actual money that's...
Well, what I want to say on that is, that does follow it, and that is why we have what's called a city settlement sheet. So when houses are sold, if you are the owner, you know, person purchasing that, you want to get a city settlement sheet that says, hey, there's fifteen hundred dollars in, in trash owed on this house that has to be paid. And that's a liability that you're going to inherit unless at settlement, you make sure that, that that gets paid.
But if, if we were, and this is going back to, because I'm thinking like as far as our, our targeting of, of collections, like if we really develop a system of collection, when we're talking about like the amount of accounts and the accounts that are, we're not looking at over like the, you owe, you know, maybe a year or less worth of bills. We're talking about these accounts where are blatant, two years, five years, and we are strategically putting on those liens on those properties there. Isn't that something that would be settled during those settlement sheets of a transfer of property as well?
If in fact a lien was placed on it.
Only if a lien was.
Yeah. So that's, I mean, I mean, that goes into a saying, it goes...
It's much more complicated than that.
Okay.
Much more complicated than that. It's, it's, the lien is automatic as a matter of law as soon as it's incurred. The city settlement sheet has it, whether the lien's in the courthouse or not. What happens is, people look for those liens, and they have to pay them if everyone's following the rules at the time of a refinancing or a transfer. But if the property is blighted, and it goes up on the county, if it doesn't sell, but it just, so it stays in the owner's name, but it goes onto that blight list, and that old debt is there, that technically would wipe out those liens as a matter of law. But because no one bought it, and it's on the county registry to be bought, it's, both the lien is sitting there, the old debt's sitting there. But there, but there is actually the, the names of the owners not allowed to buy it back out of the system, and they're waiting, and it's getting more and more and more blighted over time. So that's one set of inventory of properties. Others are ones that put themselves in chapter seven or nine or eleven. Then their bill's split into two, and there's not a good mechanism between the federal court and the county court on notifying when that is dismissed or discharged. And so there's a group of them that are there. Our office, our office has been digging a lot into these things, and, and there really are a lot of subcategories of these. Most of the really old debt, except for, I would say, the in transient large ones, which are, which I will, I will say had good faith disputes when they started them a long time ago. They were good faith disputes when something started. Most of those are going to, in reality, be uncollectible, but there's just, because of the various government systems, the information isn't there to, to check it off, because the old owner's still on the books. But it's, those liens are technically discharged. We couldn't charge them if we wanted to, because they were wiped out when they went off the judicial sale, and no one bought it because the house or the property was in such bad condition. And so there's a number of those. This all does tie into blight as a, as a thing.
Yeah.
It really does there, and a piece of our numbers on the residential's in particular tie into blight. And, and, you know, and, and sometimes people will actually go in and take over these properties without any permits, start, suddenly there's a tenant again. No, no one suspected anything, no one had the right to be there. And, you know, you have those. Now, now the property's back up with these old bills on it. So it, it is not a straight-up scenario. I think a chunk of them is subject to much more efficiencies as we move forward. I think technology will help those efficiencies as we go. And there's going to have to be a drill down on some decisions made on compartmentalizing, where do you put your public resources, and which ones you try and clean up. And, and that's the reality of it, you know. Our office is simply trying to get the collection thing up in a rational way, not to be a collections department. I mean, you know, we're trying, you know, we're trying to identify, one of our obligations was integrity of the information that came in, that, that we inherited. And so there's a lot there, and we've drilled down a lot. But I think there is going to be the ability to sort out some of it. Some of it is reality, uncollectible. But, you know, there isn't a process at the moment to cross it off, off the books.
And I want to say that if we do enact this, legislation would take a huge burden off of the law office. So they could probably concentrate really on the, the bigger, more important, important items. And the reality is, even though what all we're talking about here, we collect ninety-eight percent of the real estate taxes. So if we're adding, whatever, four hundred dollars on, I'm assuming we're going to collect pretty much of that, too. That's our history of, of collection. So, so yes, there are some blighted properties, there are those, but, you know, these things do get collected.
When you say, and, and private, when you say ninety-eight percent, you're saying within, within, within that year, or you're saying within three years? I'm not, we don't collect ninety-eight percent within a year.
No, because, because, but, but the three years is, is what we collect, and then the two years where the county's collecting, which is, you know, that comprises that...
What do we, what do we collect in a year? We're like eighty-nine, ninety percent percentile?
You mean in year one?
I mean, just like, if people pay their taxes on time, what are we directly collecting without it?
I don't know. Ninety percent.
About ninety percent.
Okay.
So the other, so the other taxes that we could be collecting, and this goes back to, we may in three years get ninety-eight percent of the taxes.
Well, I think we do.
We do get ninety-eight percent of taxes. But some of those taxes that we are getting are due to people losing their homes as well, people buying off a sheriff's sale.
I guess that is correct.
That is true.
That's correct. And that is the process.
I think, I think it's a point, and to kind of point that out when we say ninety-eight percent, like we, of knowing what the, what, what's that look like. And I'm not saying to, I just think there's a lot of things to consider. I think there's, when we took it out to the public, we heard a lot of concern from people who, who do pay their tax, who do pay their trash bill. We're not, I don't think there were a lot of people at the meeting who don't pay their trash bill with concerns. I think there were people who paid their trash bills who came to the meeting with concerns of the process. So I think, you know, just, you know, today's my last meeting, so I just want to kind of bring that up there, like when, when...
And, and my experience of that, I thought we had very few complaints. I mean, frankly, you know, if you're, I've been on city council, I've been around, and when you went to those meetings, many of those people really didn't understand, and their complaint wasn't, I would, I would say is valid, because they didn't understand some of the things, and what they said was incorrect. And, and actually, it was some of the same people at every meeting, and there were really, you know, it was only a handful at each meeting in my, from my perspective of it. So I think it's, it's something that's really, you know, questionable. And when I talk to people about this, the vast majority think, this is low-hanging fruit. The city has to do this, because we are in such desperate straits with finances.
Thank you. You're welcome. Mr. Majors.
Thank you for sharing the information, Dan. I'm open, I don't have any questions. I think most of mine got asked, but I'm open to continuing the dialogue with you and the Treasury Department. I share the concerns that my colleagues mentioned on the enforcement piece. I support the idea of finding ways to assist those residents who are physically distressed. I just want to note that forty-two percent of Americans nationally are living paycheck to paycheck. So when we work on a bill that would encompass those that are physically distressed, we may have to broaden that definition of what that means, but we can have a workshop or talk about that internally on how we want to address that. But thank you.
And Dave, I'm all for that. If there's, if council can go with this and get another, you know, some way to come up with people that are somehow in distress, you know, that's, that's fine. Because the vast majority of people paying right now will be able to handle this and, and be able to, very efficient and very cost-effective. And I do want to point out, too, a lot of these people, if you look on that sheet, they're, they're, they're companies from outside of Harrisburg, and a lot of these people that own apartments in Harrisburg, that will be the sole liability, will be on the property owner. There are also many people from outside of Harrisburg.
Okay. Ms. Green?
Thank you, President Williams. Thank you, Treasurer Miller, for bringing this information to us. I believe most of my concerns have been addressed and questions have been asked. I think it's obvious that we need a mechanism to collect the fees owed to us, but I think we need to look at all the options to make for sure we're not negatively impacting residents. So whether we're looking at quarterly billing with annual carryover, or, you know, how, how we can figure this out to make for sure that people have the best options available to them to be able to pay their bills. So I'd, I'd love to continue this discussion to see what we can do to make sure we collect these fees.
Thank you. And I, I definitely want to discuss that with you. And, and also, I know people keep saying, let's look at all the options. saying, let's look at all the options. I would love for someone to bring me some options that are going to be, you know, as low-cost and as effective as the ones that, that we're proposing. If there are some other ones out there, then, then let's explore those.
Okay. Mr. Majors, did you have additional questions to ask?
Okay. It was mentioned that a lot of what's occurring right now is a matter of policy, not law, right? So you said it's a policy that we do annual billing. I mean, we do monthly billing, excuse me. It's not, it's not mandated in anywhere in law. So policies, policy can change with, at the snap of a finger.
Well, what, what needs to change is that, to put it on the real estate tax, we need to have the, be able to give the discount and the penalty the same as what the real estate taxes are. That's why we want that.
But as, as a matter of the city doing business, we only do monthly billing by a matter of policy. We could change that to quarterly billing. It's my understanding that it, we had a billing system that was not always monthly. So by a matter of policy, the city could change the way we do billing from monthly to quarterly.
Actually, I agree with that, and I was thinking, you know, we could, if worse come to worse, just go directly to annual billing. But, you know, we lose the benefit of, if it's not on the, on the, um, on the real estate tax bill, I mean, that's really where we need some teeth, and that would help us. You know, we can do that, it would be more efficient if we went just to annual billing. And I believe we probably could do that and make that decision, but then we lose the whole impact of, of collections. I mean, it's millions of dollars.
Well, but then again, but if it's, if it's an issue where we want the annual billing, again, that can change like that. In terms of us being able to have the teeth, I, I, I get that. We need to have a, a change in the law. And if we're going to, and it, it sounds like people are at least open to continue to have those conversations. Off one initially was like, let's slow it down, let's have a little bit more conversations. I'm more than willing to continue to have the conversation if you want to try to see if we can work on something as a council and get it done by the end of the year, okay. But if it takes a little bit longer, then it takes a little longer. I understand where the Treasury Department's coming from, but I'm open to have that conversation. But right now, it seems like it's a matter of policy in terms of how we're doing that billing. Additionally, uh, as the form that I just saw a few minutes ago pointed out, uh, we know how many folks are in arrears, you know, one year, two year, five years. Uh, you know, we could potentially go after those folks first as terms of a strategy, and as we're working on making changes to how we deal with billing. So at least go after some of the, the larger accounts, which seem to be, you know, I think one was, showed two percent, the other showed about thirteen percent of folks that were two to five years versus five years plus. And the folks that are five years plus, we knew that before any change in the strong plan and, and going after. So they could have, those were folks that we may have, I don't know if we shut those folks off, or we just hadn't had an opportunity to get to them, or get them on some sort of payment schedule. Uh, but I, I'm, like I said, I'm, I'm more than willing to, to have a discussion with you guys to keep this, to at least try to figure out how we get to. And then, and again, and just to clarify, the accounts receivable number showed anybody that owed anything, that first page, so...
The twelve point two million, yes.
Right, the twelve point two million. So that was af- that was af- hold on, so...
Thirty-two dollars.
Right, no, so that was after the, was that after the billing cycle? Or was that...
It was on the, yes, it was right after. That was the billing cycle that day, and it was on that day. And about one point three million of that is current charges. So, so the past due are maybe strictly eleven million.
So then, based on the, the form I saw, just, so folks are typically, people that are current was about fifty-four percent. It's, it showed.
You know, I'm, yeah, I'm very...
Go, go, I'm, I'm, no, I'm just, I'm just, even if it's not accurate, I'm just...
I just want to make sure that's the estimated approximate. That's, I don't want to live and die by that number.
These are all estimates, estimates, estimates.
About fifty-four percent were current, zero balance.
So fifty, about half of the folks, it said zero balance. Under that, I think it was maybe fourteen percent.
Yes, another word by one month.
Fourteen, I estimated fourteen percent.
Sixty-eight percent.
Were about thirty days behind. So, hey, I might have, I might have forgot to pay the bill, or I, I'm just one month behind. And then after that, it was thirty to sixty days. So we are still collecting, I mean, we, we need to improve our collection rate, but the, the, the biggest difference, the biggest folks we have to go after are the people that are owed a year, two years, five years. And we know that that's not the overwhelming majority of the residents of the city of Harrisburg, or property owners in the city. The overwhelming majority are within sixty days and less of owing, in terms of, on the residential side.
I would agree with that.
Okay. But I'm more than willing to have the conversation moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Major. Mr. Johnson?
And just based upon, just based upon just, um, the broad data that we were giving, and given that from, from that two-plus years, and what we're talking about residential as being owed to us, it's about, um, I did like, you know, six million, and about nineteen percent of that two-plus year, we're talking about two million years, or two million dollars, which are more of our serious offenders in regards to that, to another. If you're looking at that six million.
I could actually get that number, but I don't know that number, because, because it all, it varies. You know, between two and five years, there's a whole lot of, of different amounts.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Miller. I think we all realize how serious this issue is, and we look forward to try to incorporate a system to recoup some of the monies that's owed to the city, and we're all willing to work together. So this was a start, and we'll continue this.
Okay. And I just wanted to say, President Oyeb, I did attach the law, my proposed law, right on the end of it, and it's basically from the Law Bureau. It's the same thing that they did. So, so we really are very close to, to getting this done.
Thank you very much.
Trying to help me out as much as I can.
Thank you. Um, if you want to pass, the, Mr. Miller, you want to take the papers?
Thank you.
You want to pass the papers? Thank you, sir. Moving on to courtesy of the floor. At this point, is anyone to my right that would like to come speak, Mike, please do so now. Anyone in the middle? Anyone to my left? Oh, thank you. Moving right ahead. Approved of the minutes, approved of the legislative minutes of August twenty-eighth, two thousand eighteen. Is there any admissions, deletions, corrections, council members? Hearing none, minutes will stand approved as such. Reports of committees, we have none this evening. Moving on to ordinance for first reading, Bill eleven, two thousand eighteen. Mr. Petrowski, please read that into record.
Yeah, Bill eleven of two thousand eighteen was moved by Ms. Williams, second by Mr. Allits, and ordinance authorizing and directing the creation of an irrevocable special trust to be designated as an OPEB trust fund for the purpose of depositing and segregating funds to be restricted in use for the other post-employment benefit obligations of the city and related administrative costs of the trust, providing for the appointment of a board of trustees to oversee the OPEB trust fund in accordance with the approved Act forty-seven recovery plan and any amendment thereto, providing for the board to contract for services of a trust professional authorizing the execution of a trust agreement and related documents, authorizing the acceptance and deposit of designated funds provided through certain asset transfers under the Harrisburg Strong Plan, and adopting a charter and bylaws of the OPEB Board of Trustees so as to operate in accordance with the recommendations of the Governmental Accounting Standards Board as provided in GASB Statement Number forty-three and GSB Statement Number forty-five.
Thank you, Mr. Petrowski. That will be placed in administration committee. Moving on to Bill twelve, two thousand eighteen.
Bill twelve, two thousand eighteen was moved by Ms. Williams, second by Mr. Madison, and it's an ordinance requesting the Dolphin County Board of Elections to submit to the voters within the city of Harrisburg the question of whether a government study commission should be elected to study the visibility of the adoption of home rule as the form of government for the city of Harrisburg, if advisable to draft and recommend a home rule charter.
That's also will be placed in administration committee. Moving on to ordinance for amendment, we have none this evening. Moving on to ordinance for final passage, we have none as well. Moving on to resolutions, Resolution seventy-three, two thousand eighteen. Mr. Petrowski, please read that into record.
Resolution seventy-three of two thousand eighteen was moved by Mr. Madison, second by Ms. Daniels. It's a resolution ratifying the submission of a grant application to Commonwealth Financing Authority for the purpose of funding the Harrisburg East West Multimodal Connection Project.
I am going to ask for a motion to suspend the ruse. Have a second?
A second.
Um, Mr. I'm sorry, Mr. Martin. I was looking for you.
President Williams, members of city council, Wayne Martin, city engineer. Um, you probably recall seeing this project once described as the Chestnut Street Corridor Project. Um, as you probably know, there's two different multimodal grants within the Commonwealth. One is administered by PennDOT, and that's where our, our ten million dollar pledge from the recovery plan manifests itself. And the other one is through the Commonwealth Financing Authority. So that's a competitive grant, like most other state grants. Um, we felt pretty strong about the Chestnut Street Corridor, uh, project for the last three years, and we've been submitting various versions of it, um, you know, with the, with the hospital, uh, pinnacle, I guess, uh, UPMC building now, and, and the Harrisburg University, and then the upgrades to the transportation center. So this one, it, it is Chestnut Street, but it's also Market Street from the Transfer Center to Cam, um, Cameron Street, where it would connect then with Mulder Square, and, and those improvements. And then it adds Walnut Street. And it, we took out some of the, um, uh, some of the streetscape features, like lighting, and, and just, just focused on the cartway and the ADA ramps and those types of improvements. And there's some, uh, there's some figures in here, some drawings that show, some conceptual designs and things like that. But it's a true multimodal project. You know, we have the train station and the, and the buses and the bike, bike amenities and things like that. So I can answer any questions on the grant application.
Council members, have any questions? Ms. Green?
No, I don't have any questions.
Mr. Madison?
Uh, not at this time, thank you.
Mr. Johnson? Mr. Allitt?
Good, thanks.
Mr. Majors?
No.
Ms. Daniels?
So does anything change time-wise, or is it just some of the...
So...
Please guess my question.
Well, I, I can go over a time schedule.
Does it change from what you had in mind before, or is it the same?
We, we, well, the scope changes, we made some scope changes. We, we, the Commonwealth finished their transportation study, um, the, you know, the transportation center study. So we utilized some of their concepts. They had a lot of public outreach and stuff, which was beneficial in preliminary engineering and planning phase to incorporate into that. Um, our original plan was, you know, if we were awarded the grant, then we have three years to, um, you know, project of reality, you know, fun, um, complete design and, and construction. Um, so we're, you know, we're, we haven't started anything yet. I mean, we do, we do have, we're a little bit further in the preliminary engineering side, because like I said, we've been able to incorporate some things from the, um, transportation study that was done, and, and now we have a little, little bit better detail of drawings as far as, um, concepts, but we haven't started final engineering. We won't do that until, um, we have some sort of funding in place for the construction. We're not going to, uh, the design of this is probably in the hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollar range. And so, and the design's really not good forever, you know. So we want to make sure we have some funding lined up before we kick off the, but we do have traffic counts, we do have traffic signal concepts, we have all that stuff, because, you know, that, that's useful and good information. But we just, we haven't started designing ADA ramps and things like that yet. So we're still probably, you know, if we were awarded the money, probably two to three years from...
Starting?
No, from construction completion.
Okay.
I think the grants are good for three years after execution, but they often can grant extensions if you're in the middle of a construction season, you have had a rainy weather like we've had here.
Okay. That's, that's it for me. Thanks.
Any other questions, council members? Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Thank you.
If I must, we go back to the business?
Some.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Going back into business of city of Harrisburg. Um, any other questions or comments on Resolution seventy-three? Hearing none, please call focus for Johnson.
Mr. Allitt?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Madison?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution seventy-three passed.
Moving on, Resolution seventy-five, two thousand eighteen, Mr. Petrowski, please read that into record.
Resolution seventy-five of two thousand eighteen was moved by Ms. Williams, second by Mr. Johnson. It's a resolution confirming the appointment of Mr. Lam Trong, Lam Di Trong Esquire to serve on...
I'm sorry.
The Assistant City Solicitor for the City of Harrisburg's Collection Matters.
Any questions or comments on Resolution seventy-five? And I beg your pardon, I have my mic off. Is there any questions or comments on Resolution seventy-five, council members?
Uh, no. Just want to welcome Lam. I know he's been here and, uh, working for the city for a while, but I've had, had opportunity to work with him some as we were looking at the, uh, the sanitation ordinance, and he's been, it seems like he's been doing a great job for the city so far, but us confirming the appointment, uh, just thank you for being here and hope you, uh, stick around for a while.
Okay. Mike, one question now. Will he be working on trying to recoup some of the money from the, from the trash?
He is working on it.
Okay. So he'll be, okay.
Get the money, Lam.
All right. But thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allitt?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Madison?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution seventy-five passed.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution seventy-six.
Resolution seventy-six of two thousand eighteen was moved by Ms. Williams, second by Mr. Johnson. It is a resolution appointing Clem Onuki Berry to serve on the Building and Housing Code Board of Appeals of the City of Harrisburg.
That will be placed in administration committee. Moving on to old business, council members, any old business? Okay, moving on to new business, council member. Any new business?
Yes, I would like to send our thoughts and prayers to the five Harrisburg firefighters who were deployed to South Carolina as they brace for the impact of Hurricane Florence. I truly want to give thanks to the brave women and men who went down there to help our neighbors in their time of need. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Um, I have a couple. The Latino Center of Harrisburg, L-HAC, will be having their annual heritage festival on Saturday, September the fifteenth. It will be from nine-thirty a.m. to two-thirty p.m. It's located at Thirteenth and Dairy Street. Come enjoy the live music, Spanish food, vendors, and other games and entertainment. For more information, call seven-one-seven-two-three-two-eight-three-oh-two, or at the website, www.lhac.org. Thank you. And also, a really good bit of news is that we were granted the application to approve the, uh, to defer the exit plan by Judge Labbetter today, so I just want to make sure that the residents of Harrisburg know that. Also, moving on, we know at the last meeting we announced that we're losing one of our wonderful members, and he's now going to Atlanta. So in honor of that, I want to acknowledge and give him a little send-off gift from the city council.
I knew it. You always tell them the gifts.
It's not money. To the Honorable Cornelius Johnson, on behalf of your colleagues on Harrisburg City Council, the City Clerk in the City of Harrisburg, we thank you for your dedication and service to our community. You have fought for those less fortunate and walked as a true public servant for all people in our community with integrity and passion. We wish you the best in your future endeavors, presented by Harrisburg City Council, September eleventh, two thousand eighteen.
You guys want me, you guys want me to give a speech again?
No, she's going to do it. Look, we don't want a long speech. We're not going to miss that. Oh, no.
That was just, it's more than two hours ahead of schedule, right?
I didn't, I didn't realize I was going to laugh so hard at that, man.
We're already, yeah, we're moving forward.
I'm not going to say too much. I think I said enough last time, but once again, this has been truly an honor. Um, there is no place that I felt so much joy and a sense of service than serving on this council. I'm definitely going to miss my fellow council members, and I'm excited for the future of Harrisburg. Um, I do want to give a, a shout-out to, um, Jackie as well, if she's leaving.
Yes, I'm sorry.
I think she has done remarkable work as far as with her, we have all these plans now. We got the reservoir master plan, we got, uh, what else? Other, we, housing study that's supposed to be coming out soon. So there's a lot of, a lot of the foundation has been set for us to kind of move forward.
us to kind of move forward and begin to kind of grow Harrisburg in the way it needs to be grown. I think she was very, very active inside the Mulder Square project, the parks that we just did the ribbon cutting on. So I think a lot of times when people are serving, you know, public service or working for government, you don't realize how much of a task it is, and all the red tape that comes into play, and all the people you got to get to sit at the table and agree on things, and actually execute projects. So I know you've been involved in public service for a long time, so thank you for that, and thank you for making one of your last stops, Harrisburg. We really appreciate you. But this is not goodbye, this is see you later. I'm definitely going to have my face around here, I know all you guys' numbers, I know all the reporters' numbers, too, so if I want to start a story, I can get them to start. And I wish whoever takes my seat, I hope they have the same passion and joy as I did whilst serving in council. Thank you.
Well, you only went two minutes, that was pretty good.
Yeah, man, no tears this time, neither.
No, no tears. And I also would like to extend warm wishes, and I hope that in your future endeavors as well, Jackie, you've been a really, really supportive base for me when I've needed information. So I'm truly, truly going to miss you, and I miss our lunches, but thank you so much, and I know you're going on to something greater, and you'll do well in what you do. Thank you.
I have one more shout-out.
No, that's enough.
One more, one more.
No, because we, we got to get somebody that don't talk as much as you do.
All right. I got to get a shout-out to Kirk Petrosky, the man behind the computer, who's really, he's sat through, you know, so many different council members, you know, he's reading things into first reading, and he's always figuring things out behind the scene. When I started at the city, he was one of the first persons I met and got me acclimated when I was just a health officer, and I know just all of the fellow council members here, and all the ones that came along the way, you know, truly appreciate everything you do to hold the office down. A lot of times, people don't know what happens behind the scenes, and you're involved in a lot of those conversations, and, you know, you're already pushing, you know, hitting 10 years soon here, here inside that seat, so you have really, really, have made a big